Good afternoon and welcome to Spokane City Council Briefing Session. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Feels like forever, but I'm here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Great. I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
All right. We're going to mix it up a little bit. We're going to start with the advanced agenda for September 16th. Starting with the consent items. Number one, this will be briefed by Michelle Marie.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. Per ordinance C36520 on June 12th, 2024, the city council approved our allocations of $503,000 and some change solely for the removal of, for clean and safe neighborhood hoods. $166,000 solely for the purpose of alleyway activation and $50,000 solely for the purpose of downtown housing study. This is bringing forth a contract amendment with the downtown Spokane partnership, OPR20210636, to add these fundings to their contract for them to carry out the purpose of the awards.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Number two will be briefed by Mike Piccolo.
Good afternoon. This is a contract amendment to a special council contract with the firm of Foster Garvey. The city council hired this firm to represent the city and the council in two actions involving the estate of Harlan Douglas. This additional funding will take care of some, take care of some existing invoices we have coming our way and also carries through the next phase of these two cases where we kind of put a pause on the litigation with the intent of working with the parties to try to find a solution to both actions.
Any questions, Mr. Piccolo?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Number three, the name says Tim Ott, but Tim is up there. Any questions on item number three with the contract of... With the friends of KSPS? The reimbursement of capital equipment? Okay. Perfect. Item number four, this one's going to be briefed by Matt Lomaster, who is online with us today.
Taking approval for a commercial driver's license trading contract with Drive 509. It's a three-year contract with two one-year options for a total cost of $436,480.
Any questions, council? All right. Here you go.
Thank you, Matt. Now, moving into the legislative agenda, we do have one first reading ordinance, ordinance C36543, being briefed by councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, this has been deferred before and it's only set for first reading next week and so not entirely sure if there'll be another deferral or not, but we'll meet with council president Wilkerson and our budget director this week just to kind of look more deeply into the costs associated with it.
All right. On that ordinance, I just want to also flag for consideration what guidance or guidelines are we using for determining city policy? Is it federal guidelines or I just wanted to flag that for...
I know we had talked about state guidelines. I know there is some conversation in Olympia about making Lunar Year, Lunar New Year, a state holiday. So that is going into some considerations of this particular ordinance. So we will see how that goes. We'll certainly be supporting that. Also, there has been some considerations around contracts with our employees, how this affects them. So I will actually talk with councilman Cathcart. I do see a deferral in our future because there are too many loose ends, but we'll let the first reading go through today.
All right. With that, that concludes the advanced agenda for September 16th.
Can I get a motion to approve the advanced agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the advanced agenda for September 16th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions? That is done. Thank you all. So today, we will be interviewing two candidates for the Spokane Arts Commission coming before us and I'm just going to call the first one up is James Pecotas. Welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself, James, and your interests.
... It's the construction team, Thomas Gushen. Thank you. It's an honor to be here. My name is Grizzly Bearpa. My English name is James Pecotas. I'm a national performing artist from right here in Spokane and I don't know, I've, I was taught when I started getting into art that the arts and culture is an ecosystem. And for the first four or five years of my arts career, it was about me trying to be an artist, serving my needs. And now that I have that, now that I've been able to give back to my community, I feel like it's my responsibility to strengthen the ecosystem where I'm at. Whether that be professional development, whether that be serving on boards, it's time to give back from the experience that I've gained over the last five, six years of touring the nation as a performing artist. So happy to be here, honored to be interviewed and thank you for any of this time that we have together.
So where do you see Spokane Arts going? It's, it's kind of gone through many reiterations and we're at this point now with new leaderships and new things are happening. What would be one thing you could identify or like, wow, if they could do that, this would be the one thing?
It kind of started, I don't know, four or five months ago when I met with the new executive director for Spokane Arts, Skylar. And they had a gathering where he introduced himself and it was interesting. There was a group of us artists that were there and afterwards, we just went out to gather and a couple of people had drinks, we had meals, and he joined us for like two or three hours, just sat there and talked with us. And he talked about his visions that he wanted for Spokane. He talked about wanting artists at the ground level, all the way up to career level, having sustainability in the arts. He talked about strengthening professional development, which two key points that I really wanted to build. A lot of my experience comes from a national nonprofit called First Peoples Fund and they started a curriculum of their own called Native Artist Professional Development and it was really geared towards visual artists. And in 2019, when I came onboard, they started their first chapter in performing arts and it was just one chapter in a book of like 10 chapters. And they brought me to Albuquerque to advocate for performing arts and kind of consult whether or not their knowledge was in a good place before they were going to roll it out publicly. And since then, they have a whole new curriculum that's all for performing arts. So over the last four or five years, they've made me a certified trainer and I've been able to go out to different reservations and teach these curriculums and teach young artists, whether they're visual artists, performing artists, like across the whole spectrum of arts. I've been able to teach people how to think of their art as a business and grow their business acumen and grow sustainability through their arts. And now that I've moved here, it's been about a year and a half that I've moved here into Spokane. I feel like I want to give back to the community that, you know, is, is giving me such an opportunity. I've gotten to perform at some of the big performing arts centers here all around the region and it's, it's been because of this city that I can take that leap, building my own stage production now. So yeah, I just want to give back.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We are glad you came back. So welcome back to Spokane. We'll be voting and nothing else will be required of you. So thanks for stepping up. Next, we have Suzanne Otter Smith. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello. Introduce your accompaniment, your person, your...
This is Louis, my service dog. So when you see me around town, you'll see Louis as well.
Great. Welcome, Louis.
Thank you. And he says thank you. So my name is Suzanne Oster Smith and I'm the chair of the Dance Department at Gonzaga University and I've lived here since 98, have been very engaged in the dance and in the arts community in general, but really have created since 2000, the Gonzaga Dance Program from nothing to what it is today. Very proud of the fact that we now have a regional, regular, regional presenting series of professional dance that wasn't here before I got here. So I'm excited to serve on the commission because it's been a hoot and a half doing all that work and I'm really proud of where it's gone. But I'm also at a point in my career where I'm kind of hungry to expand further and to see what I can listen to, what I can be a part of, and what I can contribute in a broader sense to our region and to the city.
Great. Any questions for Suzanne? Well, I will say thank you and thank you for being that bridge. I think sometimes people think dance is art, then art is art, and then some other form of art is art and it's all art together.
Yes.
So that'll be exciting for you to bring that experience with you. Nothing else is required of you. Thank you again for stepping up and then we will be in contact.
Lovely. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Now, moving to the current agenda for September 9th for tonight, starting with the consent agenda. Number one will be briefed by Raylene Jeanette.
Afternoon, council president, council members. Mine is for a value blanket with DNL Supply Company from Moses Lake for various access frames and grates. For the wastewater department, for $96,000. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now, we have items two through six. All these items will be briefed by Rick Giddings.
Good afternoon, council. Item two is the purchase of six mobile speed feedback trailers for the Office of Neighborhood Services. This is going to double the department's traffic calming capability as specified in Mayor Brown's executive order earlier this year. National Barricade won the, the purchase award via RFQ. Total purchase price, including sales tax, $71,940. This will be using traffic calming funds.
Rick, what will all of these traffic calming feedback things be able to do? They're newer technology versus the old ones. So what kind of data would we be able to pull off of them?
Yeah, and, and the specifics of that are really kind of held by the department. I don't, I don't use them myself, but these trailers, the, the, first off, they're all, they're all the same technology. So we can download the, the speed data into, you know, into one format, right? So that helps a lot. They're, they, they capture speed, they'll capture all the data the department needs and, and be able to put that into a, into an Excel format or other formats.
They don't have the ability to do traffic counts, do they?
You know, I'm not sure on that. I doubt it because you'll have, on a two-lane road, you'll have multiple cars, but it's, it's possible, but I can find that out if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other questions for Rick on this?
Item three is, is the purchase of two vehicles from Bud Clary of Longview, Washington. 3A is a 2024 Ford F-550 for, with a cabin chassis for the water department. It's going to be commissioned as a service truck and be replacing a unit that is, needs some very expensive repairs. Total cost, including tax for that one, $78,191.9. And 3B is a 2024 Ford Explorer K8 Hybrid for SPD. This will be using JEG grant funds that were approved by city council back in November of 2023. This is going to replace an older unit that has exceeded its economic life. Total costs, including tax and commissioning on this is not to exceed $75,470. Both of these purchases will be, will utilize the Washington State DES contract. Item four is pre-purchase approval for four 2024 Ford Lightning electric pickups. These will be purchased by the water department, but by agreement will be utilized by parks for right-of-way maintenance. These are replaced, the units that were transferred to parks for this are in pretty, pretty bad shape, so these will be replacing units that are costly to repair. Total cost, including tax, not to exceed $220,000. The order window on these is closed and, but we did find some existing inventory at Bud Clary, so the likelihood is that we will, and these meet our needs, the likelihood is that we will, we will use a DES contract and use Bud Clary for this purchase as well. And just as a side note, there are AC Level 2 chargers going in at Parks facilities right now. Any questions on that?
That was my question.
Item five, it's a five-year value blanket contract with Titan Truck Equipment. This is for the purchase of specialty truck equipment, toolboxes, service bodies, other upfitting components and supplies. The RFQ was issued, Titan was selected as the lowest cost bidder. Total expenditure is not to exceed $100,000 per year for a five-year total of $500,000. And then finally, for me, item six is a three-year public works maintenance contract with Hot Sea of Spokane. This is for the maintenance and repair of equipments and the purchase of supplies for the city's vehicle wash site. Contract amount for this is $150,000 per year for a three-year total of $450,000. Any questions on anything?
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Now, items seven through 10, these items will be briefed by David Payne, who is online.
Okay, there we go. Good afternoon, council president, council members. The first item is a five-year value blanket with EJ Oil for the delivery of Ultra Low Number 2 Di diesel, not to exceed $750,000 over the term of the contract, $150,000 annually plus tax. The other part of this agreement is for Chevron lubricants, not to exceed $150,000 over the course of the five-year agreement, $30,000 annually plus tax. The next is a renewal value blanket, one of four, with Atlas Boiler Company in Spokane for the as-needed purchase of Maxon valves, which are used in our gas burner system to start the boilers up. This contract runs from September 15th, 2024 through September 14th, 2025, not to exceed $75,000 plus tax. The next one is a contract renewal, one of three, with Bender CCP of Portland, Oregon for as-needed repairs to our boiler or feedwater pumps. This contract runs from September 1st, 2024 through August 31st, 2025, not to exceed $150,000 plus tax. And the last item I have is a public works contract with Continental Door Company, Spokane Valley, for the purchase of two roll-up doors for our new ash system, the waste energy. The contract runs from September 1st, 2024 through April 30th, 2025, for a cost of $125,566, including tax. Any questions?
Seeing none.
All right. Thank you, David. Now, we have items 11 through 14 and all these items will be briefed by Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, council. Item number 11 is a five-year value blanket with Core and Main for the purchase of fire hydrants. These are typically used for new install or repair of old hydrants. Total value of $109,912. Any questions on that one?
What's the life of a fire hydrant?
Life of a hot fire hydrant can be 100 years. We rebuild them on a regular basis. Once they stop being produced and we can't get repair parts in any form anymore, some of our hydrants only last about 50 years because we can't get the parts for it anymore. Item number 12 and 13 have to do with replacing a chlorine gas ejectors for our disinfection of the water system. We're trying to install a onsite hypochloric generator at Well Electric. That is our facility that actually manned 24 hours a day. We have people in the building. So in order to mitigate that hazard, we're installing the onsite chlorination system. Now, item number 12, purchases a tank, a brine tank that takes saltwater, mixes it together and holds that for the generator. That is $109,912. Yes, sir?
So I have a couple of questions. Are we at some point going to have a plan for transitioning away from the gas chlorination into the water? I know that it, it tends to be a little dangerous. Is there any plan for that?
It is a, it is a dangerous system. We mitigate that through training and our employees, but we are trying to transition away from that. This is the first step. We went through a whole process to analyze what we would need to do that. And this facility is our large, one of our largest producers, as well as being housed with people inside that building. So this gets us away from that chlorine gas.
One last thing on this. It would be a pretty incredible coincidence if the values of 11 and 12 are the exact same. Was that a typo or is that actually the exact same?
Since they were submitted, it is a coincidence. Since they were submitted by totally different people, I have to say that it is a coincidence.
To the eighth digit, it's the exact same.
I see what you're saying. I will check on that and I'll get back to you. 13 is the actual generator that takes that saltwater and turns it into chlorine for the system. And that value is $336,119,000. Any other questions on that one? Yes. Item number 14 is a change to a contract with McMillan. McMillan Associates is the engineering firm that is doing the spillway rehab for the dam. This item, they had to redesign repairs to one of the spill gates that was damaged. That design then had to be submitted to FERC, our Energy Regulatory Committee, and they had to approve the design in order to send out to a contractor. So this pays for the design portion of that. We'll be back in about two weeks to present the change to the actual contractor to build that change or the repair to the spillway.
I think that's it, Lauren.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now, items 15 and 16.
Sorry, hang on. We're, we're looking at that number there, Lauren, and I think this number is inaccurate on one of them.
Just looking at the briefing paper, it, it looks like the first one is, is like 350 and the second one is the 10912.
Item 12 would be 350.
That's, that's what it looks, item 11. That's how it, that's what it looks like.
Okay. Okay. I don't have the entire briefing packet with me, but I would, I would believe that.
Can we get that?
I understand. I understand the, the difficulty in both those numbers being exactly the same.
It's a one in 10 billion chance, is all I was saying. Yeah.
Yeah, if we get the correct numbers, we can go ahead and vote on it tonight instead of deferring it.
Yep.
Excellent. I can do that. Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. So yeah, items 15 and 16, these will be briefed by Laz Martinez.
Good afternoon. The first item is to increase the allowance of a value blanket. We already have the, the funds on the, on the budget and these funds came through grants to us. Basically, one of them will allow us to install firewalls between us and agencies like the county and track, so we can monitor the flow because we exchange data with them on a regular basis. And the second one would be to enhance the security of every single network port we have throughout the city. So when someone connects a device to a port, we will know if the device is authorized to be connected in there. And if it is not, we're going to move it to a different location. Let's call it, we're gonna allow it to access internet, but it's not going to be able to access anything inside. A quarantine, if you will. That was the, the first item is just to increase the value blanket. And the second one is $169,000 for the renewal of Asset Works. This is a software that is being used right now by facilities, fleet and the firefighters. It's related to equipment maintenance and fuel consumption. This is a software that they use to operate their business. Any questions? Have a good day.
All right. Thank you, Laz. Item number 17, this will be briefed by Ariel Anderson.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you. So this is in regards to the RFP that was issued on June 25th, 2024, for that $4 million that had been converted from emergency housing fund grant money to the SDG or CHG funds that Commerce actually administers. So it basically converted from federal to state funding. Just as a very brief overview, because it's been a little bit, 12 agencies responded. Two of those were not, did not meet the baseline qualifications to, to move forward. CHHS board passed the RFP committee's recommendations on the 7th of August. And then generally, and I do want to highlight this, that over $11 million was requested total and 3.9 was, was available to share out. I will also say very, very briefly that, you know, this, this RFP, all interventions that were available under the SDG guidelines were fair game in terms of the competition. So we did highlight in there, hey, if you're an organization or a provider that is prepared to put forth an application for a scattered site model, please do that. I do want to say that I think that it's going to take the community at least a good, a good year to really have this conversation and get a more robust response. good year to really have this conversation and get a more robust response for the scattered site model. Not to say that we didn't get a response, because we did. Jules Helping Hands was, was one of those applications. And I do think that there's going to be opportunity, you know, in the very near future, to get and elicit responses for the scattered response. But also recognizing that in the course of the next year, really cultivating those relationships with other potential providers or organizations is going to be key to rolling out the scattered site model effectively. So I am here to ask any, or to answer any questions, yes.
Could you just talk to me about, talk to us about Hope House and why there was a conscious choice to withdraw funding from Hope House, meaning we're now having to backfill with ARPA? Why was that choice made?
So that was a request from VOA, and I thought, you know, I had tried to make that, you know, or state that in the briefing paper, as well as in that Excel sheet. They had, you know, requested that any of that funding that had initially gone to Hope House be moved to fully fund the young adult shelter, which then ended up with us having that residue or that residual of 184,000.
But we don't, we don't really know why they wanted to switch the funding specifically?
To, in, in order to effectively, you know, roll out the young adult shelter, so to support Yaz.
But I guess, and that's where my confusion comes in, I mean, if they built this brand-new young adult shelter, surely they have funding and a plan and all kinds of stuff. So what, what's the situation? Why is that not working out?
So, I mean, I can just speak from, you know, the, anytime that an organization is grant-funded, that is never 100%, right? So I will say that things, you know, things do bubble up, they percolate, that are kind of outside of your direct control, but that is a, that's a risk anytime that you are, depending on grant funds, public money, that that, you know, that's going to impact. I don't think that that, no provider is impervious to that. So, so.
So last question. You mentioned the residual and you, but you also commented on the delta between the request and the allocation. And so I guess I'm wondering, you know, it's not a huge sum, but 184,000 isn't funny money, it's real money.
Sure.
And to divide that by 10 just because does not seem like it was a very thoughtful process, and could not $184,000 be going to either an organization or a cause that would comply with this, that would be a far better use than just, here's some extra money?
Sure, so I, you know, the 184 divided by the 10 that were already vetted and agreed that they were going to be funded by the RFP committee, I actually think that that is at least a recognition of that, you know, of fairness. That being said, it's not the only solution, so, you know, I will absolutely concur with that. Okay?
All right, thank you, Ariel. Now we have items 18 through 20 that will be briefed by Marlene Feist.
Good afternoon, City Council. So item 18 is our updated agreement with Airway Heights. So it's their water service agreement. We talked about this at the PIES meeting in August. This provides for conversion of the emergency supply to permanent supply that we've been providing since 2017. It acknowledges the need for capital investment to continue to provide Airway Heights with that water, and then allows for some growth over time. It goes along with item 19, which is a capital agreement between Airway Heights Spokane and the Department of Commerce. Airway Heights was able to secure some funding for capital improvements to ensure a safe and available water supply for them. So that money is then being invested into the city's system to help with, fulfill the agreement that we are signing in item 18. Any questions there, Councilmember?
Yeah, sorry to be this guy. In here it says, on the agreement with Airway Heights, it says relates to consent agenda item number 17, which was the CHHS. In here, so I don't know how that's relating to the item 17.
Well, I didn't write that part, so that, that came from the clerk's office on that, so I, so it does not. And item, and this, else this is relates to item 16, which is also incorrect. So I think Jacoby's looking at some, and Terry's looking at some of those changes, so I, I can't really answer that one, so sorry.
With that, so what's the, we're switching from emergency to permanent, and what was the, the length of that agreement?
Well, so our, we, we did it according to City Council rules, which is a 20-year agreement. We'll have five-year check-ins, and then we would anticipate, obviously, that we'll continue to have a relationship with Airway Heights long-term. Basically, we've had, we've had a relationship with Airway Heights since 1984, and I don't anticipate that, that changing. We just want to make sure that the agreement stays current to current thinking and current needs for both parties.
And I know that the reason why we're doing that is, turns out, they have some bad water out there, and I know that they're drilling a well. Do we have, or they're at least pursuing that? Do we have a timeline on that?
So it is our understanding at this point that they're not pursuing that well, and they've turned to the city to be their long-term provider of water.
So with this agreement, are we expecting anything from them long-term to be finding their own source of water, or is it going to be the city of Spokane will be the ones sort of providing it forever?
Right, so, you know, the city of Spokane is the largest water purveyor in the region. We really are the regional water purveyor. This is an appropriate way for us to continue to support the community long-term. Remember, they operate their own system once we, so we're delivering water to two points of connection, and then they operate their own system. So I suppose that it's possible that they could continue to seek additional water supplies, but it probably makes most sense for us to manage the water resources more globally as a community.
All right.
Any other questions on those? All right. Number 19, or actually, number 20, is an amendment to an agreement that Council passed a couple of years ago. This was in response to an ARPA allocation that Council upgraded to in June to add a third school-based health clinic. So previously, they had used city funds that had been allocated for health-based clinics at Shadle Park and North Central, and this will add another clinic. It's for capital expenses, it's a match one-to-one. At either Elsie or Ferris, they're, they're evaluating both of those locations to see where it will be the best fit.
Thank you, Marlene. Item number 21, this one will be briefed by Mark Papich.
This item is an interlocal agreement between the city and the West Plains PDA, just to establish terms and conditions for reimbursement of the $1 million in ARPA grant funds that the PDA received to go towards construction of the Spotted Road Booster Station. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. Items 22 and 23, both these items will be briefed by Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. Number 22 is the replacement of a series of windows over at the West Central Community Center. These were identified in the facility assessment as an entire bank of failed windows. This is an ARPA dollar project to go along with the HVAC project that you folks approved a few, a few weeks back. And then number 23 is the, the construction of some subdividing walls, installation of some doors, and the development of a, a storage facility, a storage area in the gymnasium to, to help protect and separate people from the equipment they store there. So, also ARPA-funded. So between the three, the HVAC that I came to you with several weeks back, and these two, we spend about 95, 97% of the ARPA dollars that were allocated to West Central. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dave. Item number 24, this one will be briefed by Jason Akoniski.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. Mr. Jones, this item is a five-year value blanket with Kershaws that was selected through a competitive RFP. They were lowest-cost, lowest-lead-time provider through the four solicitations or proposals we received, so we're just seeking your approval for that contract. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason. Item number 25, this one will be briefed by Tammy Palmquist.
This is adding additional funds to the DSC fee study. We had a couple revisions that we had to go through that were not anticipated, just trying to get data out of Acela was not very helpful or useful, so we had to continue to go over that. That caused some rework. We also had the consultants reach out to a couple more stakeholders than we had originally budgeted for because we felt that value was really important. So of course, that costs a little bit of money. So they asked for, in order to finish the whole study, is about 15,000. We've asked to add 20, not to exceed, just in case we have another hiccup, so we don't need to come back. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tammy. And then we do have a request motion to suspend the Council rules and add the following item for item 28, which is OPR 2024-0782, and then this item will be briefed by Matt Boston.
May I move to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding to the agenda? Second?
Yeah, I guess I would prefer to get some responses before we make that choice.
Suspend the rules?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
I'm sorry, I was talking to someone else. What was his question?
Talking to that guy. Got it. Councilmember Kathcart would like some more discussion or background before we suspend the rules. Do we need, we do need to suspend the rules to actually have the conversation?
Well, you should have a, a motion before, before you have any kind of debate, so yes, I mean.
We, we have a motion before us.
Yeah, in a second.
So to speak to that, I think if your questions are about suspending the rules, then, but if they're later about the item, I think that's the difference between the discussion.
Obviously, you guys don't need me to vote on it, but I, I would like to be thoughtful in how I vote on these different items, and if I don't yet agree or know if I agree, how can I agree to suspend the rules to then entertain the item below? I mean, it's just, just basic stuff here.
Well, at this point, there's a motion and a second on the floor to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? Rules are suspended?
And then I move to add item number 28, the MOU with the MMP Association to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to add item number 28. All those in favor?
I think is a discussion now?
Discussion?
Yep. So I think this would be the appropriate time to ask the questions about the item.
Well, yeah, I'm looking for the, the total cost. That's what I requested, and that's what I need to have.
So we won't have total cost until the application actually closes. So total cost from the perspective, perspective of the application costs or the, the payment out is 10,000, 15,000, 20,000. Unlike the SSP, this is not a first-come, first-served basis. This is vetted on an application-by-application basis to determine the operational impact of not only the department, but the organization as a whole. So, for example, if a MMP member applies for this and says, I would like to do the, not early, sorry, the voluntary retirement incentive plan, they have to submit their application, and then the supervisor and the department had to have to review that to see if the department can sustain that, that operational loss, whether that be through the vacancy for a short period of time for recruiting a new position, the promotional period of getting somebody else new into that position, or seeing if there is a absence that can be made in the kind of food chain of the promotional spots that roll into that position. Unfortunately, without the applications, we really don't know the cost. So it, again, anywhere between 10 and 20,000 for a payout. The, the vacation and the sick leave payout, of course, are part of this as well, but those are liabilities that are sitting on our books on an ongoing basis that could be paid at any point in time. These are all voluntary, or, I'm sorry, these are all retirement-eligible employees. So in theory, without this, they could be taking this tomorrow at any point in time, so the, the difference is the 20,000, the 10 to 20,000 variable. The only thing that I can share from the MMP's data collection is that they did reach out to their members and say, is there anybody that's interested? I don't know all the exact questions, but I believe the gist of it was, is anybody interested? If you are interested, please, please tell us what your hang-ups are on it versus would you be interested in it likely right away, et cetera. I believe out of, I want to say anywhere between 30 and 50 respondents, they got about nine people that, that showed interest in it. So we're saying, okay, those, there could be 10 people out there, there could be more. Obviously, it's been advertised by the media, so there might be more engagement in it now. But again, ultimately, the decision lands on the depart, or the department and the organization as a whole to see if they can actually really capture the impact of the reduction in force.
So I, I appreciate that, and I don't have an inherent concern with this. I just, with the, the police version, I, I felt like we were not given the total information, in particular, the, the sick leave and the, you know, $600,000 out of ARPA, which I do not think is a responsible choice.
Yeah.
And I do not want to see us funding another million and a half, or however much, out of ARPA, or, you know, some source that should be going to other purposes. So I, I just, that's my concern. I just want to know, what is the cost benefit? What, what is the delta between these 10 going away and bringing on perhaps 10 new individuals, which is what we're, we're saying we're doing for police?
Yep.
I assume that would be the case here in, in most instances.
Right.
So what does that delta look like?
Yeah, and it's, it's really too early to tell, because again, there, there could be vacancies that, that could be vacant in perpetuity or just a short period of time. We don't really know, but really, from a financial lens, the way that I look at it, right, the, the only cost is really the 20, the 10 to 20,000 payout. It's not the vacation and the sick leave, because the sooner you're paying that, the lesser you're paying. Your COLA increases that are going to happen in future years are going to exacerbate that cost in future years, and they're just going to continue to compound. Versus if you pay that out immediately, for example, if we got an abundance of, of retirements, that would be a liability that we have on the books that we have to make good on, turns into an expense. So I would rather pay that out at a lesser amount before COLAs hit in future years than paying it right now. So I don't take that as an expenditure in the immediate, because in theory, that, that is a benefit of the city to pay it out on the lesser amount, because it is that liability that is just continuing to grow as hours are accumulating and COLAs are increasing.
So, last thing I'll say is just, I think in the future, with these kinds of things, it'd be really helpful, though, I mean, even if you're just calculating it with the COLA, just give me that information, so I know what the, the cost is. I mean, we can look and see what the worst case would be on sick leave, what, you know, it's probably not hard to, to look in the database to see how much sick leave various folks have. This is the high end, this is the low. Here's your best case, worst case. I just feel like there's ways we could get some actual data.
Right.
I'm just sick and tired of making so many silo decisions without all of the information, and I'm just, I'm, I'm just pretty frustrated by it.
I understand.
Any more questions? So there is a motion and a second to add it to tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions has passed, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now moving into legislative agenda, we do have a couple special budget ordinances. The first one is Ordinance C36568. This one will also be briefed by Matt Boston.
Welcome back, Mr. Boston.
I gotta log back into my computer.
It's a whole thing.
It's a whole thing. You guys are pretty demanding, you know that? I apologize. So this is, this is exactly what Councilmember Kathcart was talking about. This is the ARPA transfer for the interest that was incurred for ARPA, as well as fixing the, the $550,000 that was allocated months ago to the criminal justice system, the, and municipal courts to maintain those positions through the end of the year. So that's the 550. The remainder of this ARPA transfer is to cover the vacation and sick leave payouts for the police officers that did take the SSP, instead of taking it out of unallocated reserves. Again, just a reminder for everybody on the Council that this, this investment policy was changed early February, or, I'm sorry, early 2023, I believe it was February in 2023, when it was briefed to the Investment Commission, and then they changed that and they brought it to Council in Q1 of 2023, basically saying that the ARPA, the ARPA fund shouldn't be generating or maintaining the interest revenue that's happening and dispersing it out to the, the, the funds that are operational-based funds. So general fund being one of them, this would have landed into the operational reserves, similar to the other excess that we have in investment. similar to the other excess that we have in investment earnings. And so that is the decision to pull it out of the American Rescue Plan interest versus transfer the interest over and then pull it out of the American Rescue Plan, or I'm sorry, the unallocated reserves.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
Now we have ordinance C36569, and this will be briefed by Chris Evert.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This ordinance is to accept funding in the amount of $3,781,306 for the purchase of seven vehicles for solid waste collections utilizing a SIP loan. This was previously briefed at Pies and Finance, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Onto emergency ordinances, we do have one emergency ordinance, ordinance C36570. This one will be briefed by Chris Wright.
Did you want me to brief that or did you?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So at Councilmember Cathcart's request, I drafted this ordinance, which would be an amendment to existing code. The existing code provides a process for citing city owned homeless shelters. This would expand that existing ordinance to cover not just city owned homeless shelters, but actually city funded shelters as well. It takes out the word shelters and expands the term to comprehensive support facilities and provides a definition for that. It expands on the notion of good neighbor agreements, which is not, which is part of the existing code but not really defined. And so it has some specific requirements for what needs to be in a good neighbor agreement and who needs to be at the table when you're talking about these facilities. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that would be in there.
I think that kind of covers the gist of it.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Council President.
Oh, and it is set up as an emergency ordinance, and this would be your first emergency ordinance under the new code provisions that govern emergency ordinances. So there are warehouses that attempt to meet the requirements of the code.
Councilmember Zepone.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to defer this or refer this back to committee.
Second?
Oh, the new indefinite deferral. Wonderful.
I can speak to that. So we talked a lot about the roundtable discussions today. In particular, this is one of the codes that we're going to be talking about and asking people for feedback at the roundtables. So I think that there are things in here that are worthy and great, and I just think for process wise, we referred all of the others back to it to do this process, that it wouldn't make sense to adopt this now, go to the roundtables and potentially change it based on community feedback in just a week or in the beginning of feedback tomorrow on what we're telling them. And anytime shorter than that, I think would also, I think we should go back to the community stakeholders. We have communicated to them that this is part of the code that we'd be looking into. So I think for consistency, it would be included there.
Mr. Wright?
Quick clarification, I assume you want to refer it back to the committee of origin?
I want to refer it back to the committee of all the homelessness ordinances together.
Okay, well, that might be a different animal. So we, some clarification, I don't know where those reside, if they reside in urban experience or where they are.
So the city, committee of origin?
Sure. Committee of origin to come back at a later date after the roundtables.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
I mean, I think it's an understatement to say this is gross. We are facing an emergency in Northeast Spokane. The intent is to pursue an agenda here by delaying this until, you know, after the election conveniently. That's the, that is what is going on. But really, it's more than that. In this case, there is a rush to cite compassionate addiction treatment in Chief Gary. And what do you know, I've got an ordinance that might put some process around that, might put some thoughtfulness around that, might give the neighborhoods an opportunity to weigh in, might give the equity subcommittee an opportunity to do their role and do the analysis on whether or not this is an appropriate location. I, I just, I don't get it. I mean, while I do, there's zero political downside to hurting Northeast Spokane, zero for the folks that are up here. It's just truth, and it's pretty disgusting how we are treated. It is very disgusting how my constituents are treated. I am just sick of it, and this is a routine thing. Scared to death to take a vote, doesn't want to touch it, not sure why you're sitting on a dais if you're that fearful of taking a stance, but here we go. We'll just do this again and again and again, probably again after that. This is all part of a larger plan.
Councilmember Navarrete?
I read the ordinance, and there's just some questions that I still have, so I will support to defer it for after committee. I also want to ask the legal department some questions and see if I can get a memo for that, too, so.
Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I support everything Councilmember Cathcart just said, but also we just said a date in the future. We didn't actually establish a date. Can we establish a date?
Well, it's going to committee, so there's no date.
It's going to committee.
Whoever the chair of that committee is.
But it would just require us then, if that's the case, it would just require us to resubmit it to that committee?
So the intent of the roundtables is not any agenda, but to get community feedback, and over 100 people are wanting to participate in this process. So I think it's disingenuous to say that the public doesn't want to weigh in on these ordinances. The intent is to be holistic, and I, we talked earlier, we don't know when they will conclude because that would, we don't know how long people are going to talk about things.
Oh, so not like the roundtable tomorrow, but like the roundtables?
It's a series.
Ethereal roundtables. Okay, yeah, then that's truly terrible. So I guess I will speak and say that I do think it's actually disingenuous then because if it was something where it's like, oh, we just want to get more community feedback, you could have done that before you submitted the ordinance. And so to pull it and say, that's the purpose, I think is disingenuous to pull it and say, okay, well, yeah, once those roundtables are done, I don't, I feel, again, really gross about that. Give it a date in the future, you know, let it, let it happen.
So I will comment, there was a couple of things in this that concerned me because there was no clarity. First of all, working with Councilmember Cathcart on really what a good neighbor agreement is because there's several out there, and we're trying to put something in those agreements that's actual enforceable, that aligns with the code. My concern was how much money would be invested in these facilities or these operations. So we don't have that clarity yet either, how it interacts with state code already around this. And truly, some of the requirements will make it almost impossible for providers to ever cite a facility to provide services to unhoused people in our community. So that is a challenge to me as well. Willing to work on it. I'm willing to take the vote as of tonight. I would vote it down. I would not advance it, but I'm willing to send it back to committee if people want to engage at that level. Councilmember Klitschke, Dylan, and Cathcart.
I totally cut in line about that one, sorry. I, too, would oppose this as it currently stands. Coming from a landies background, I'm familiar with essential public facilities citing processes and our countywide planning policies, but this, to me, doesn't make sense. It's a really hard leap for me to think we can do a public facilities citing process because we consider something city funded. I'd like to know what that really means and where the bar is. It just makes me very uncomfortable, and I think it does make it more difficult to do things that are already difficult in this community. We're asking nonprofits to fix a lot of problems for us with very limited funding. We're not completely funding any of them. And to think that we're also going to take control over where they cite their facilities just doesn't make sense to me. I'm happy to continue the conversation in these roundtables and at committee, but right now, I'm definitely not in support of this.
And Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, I, you know, I tend to rather have a finite date and have an established goal with kind of our process around deferrals and, you know, I understand a lot of the frustration that Councilmember Cathcart, you know, mentioned. While I don't agree with, you know, everything, I still think there's some good here. I was going to tease a little bit about the wherewithal is not seeing the emergency ordinance language that we worked on, but it does look like it is there, so thank you for adding that. But I guess kind of process wise, and I do think there is some room for, you know, language in this specifically around the section 12.05062, particularly with the equity subcommittee, I think, creating that bigger process that's reviewed through them. I think that's a great addition, and I appreciate the language in here that was added by Councilmember Cathcart as well as the community engagement. Again, I just, and maybe I'm naive, I don't think we're often as far apart on some of these issues. So I would rather see a two week deferral, have us go back, work out some of this language and present that, and whether that is for some of the next roundtables of council, that remains to be seen. But yeah, I would support that.
Councilmember Cathcart, then we'll go back to process.
Yeah, just to be clear, there was, there was an agreement, at least, that I had made with Councilmember Dylan to defer for two weeks prior to this meeting, which would have given some time to look at the questions that have been raised, and we could compromise, we could collaborate, we could come up with an outcome that we can generally all support. I'd agree to that. I think that's a good faith effort to try to find a solution that we can all agree on. An indefinite deferral or in this case, kicking it to committee, it's just a gimmick.
Councilmember Bingo?
I was reliably informed that CAT is not a homeless shelter, and so I don't think it necessarily plays into the discussions in the roundtable if it's not a homeless shelter. If it does play into those discussions, then I think we're admitting this is a homeless shelter. So I think we should be careful with our language there.
So I will say that Councilmember Cathcart and I met last week talking about the good neighbor agreement, and I did share my concerns around this particular ordinance that's before us, so there was no secret where I was coming. I may say I have a different view because I'm a provider, and so I know how challenging it is to provide these services and the additional constraints that are placed on providers going forward. So currently, there is a motion on the floor to defer this back to committee. I believe there was a second. There was a motion and a second to defer it back to committee. Councilmember Cathcart?
Point of clarification, which committee?
Of origin.
Committee of origin.
Which was?
Urban Experience, was that? Or Finance, yeah, Finance Administration.
And no definite date at some point.
It's deferred back to committee. That will be backed up to the committee.
It would take another motion up here to pull it out of committee early. So you can just have it go back through the committee process, you know, schedule it on the committee, let it go through there and make its way back up to the council agenda in the ordinary course. But if that process wasn't fast enough, there could be a motion up here on the dais to try and pull it up faster.
Right, but it can only be brought back through that motion for a person who voted for that motion, correct?
No.
No.
It's not like reconsideration. It doesn't have that requirement. So once this body refers it to the committee, it's in the committee, and it would be another motion to bring it back. And that has nothing to do with who voted for the motion to refer it.
Okay, so in theory, this motion passes. I make the motion immediately afterward to say, okay, I want to put it on Urban Experience at this time. That's the motion you're talking about?
Well, the motion that's before you is to refer it back to the committee of origin.
Right, so let's say that passes. Let's assume that passes, and then I immediately make a motion right there to send it back to committee on a certain date. That's the valid motion that you're saying I need to make?
Yeah, you could do that, or you could make a motion now to amend it and specify further what you want the instructions are to the committee.
I'll make the motion to amend the motion to go to the next Urban Experience meeting.
You need a second for that. Council President.
That's next Monday.
Next Monday?
Next Monday.
I will second.
That's after the roundtable.
And then now you would have a debate on that motion now.
I'll speak to it. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I have appreciated in many ways collaboration and collaborative efforts from members of this council to say, okay, I've got a problem with this, and I don't, I don't believe those efforts are bad faith. I appreciate what you're saying, and if that's the case, I'm, you know, we work out those issues in a week all the time. And so this, we would hear from the initial roundtable, and feel free to bring that up if you'd like in that, in that roundtable. And then from there, we can take that feedback and put it into, into what we're doing next Monday.
Next Urban Experience would be October since we just had that today.
That's what I thought, yes, thank you. Yeah.
So I guess you could be looking at the calendar for next Finance Committee.
Don't you think Finance would be better?
The current motion was to send it to Finance, which would actually be before that meeting because Finance is still this month.
Finance would be after the initial roundtable, yeah.
So clarity is to, the motion on the floor is to defer it back to the committee of origin after this discussion.
There's an amendment.
I'm amending it.
But he amended it to Urban Experience.
Which is actually after the original motion.
Which is a later date than what I think he had intended to put on the table. So if you would like to withdraw that, Councilmember Bingo, if it goes to Finance, that will be the fastest committee coming up to review this again.
I accept your terms.
All right, it's been moved in second.
Does that officially withdraw?
I don't know.
I think you need the second to also withdraw.
I agree. I concur.
Okay, so I'll make the proper amended motion to send it to Finance Committee, and what's the date on that Finance Committee?
Well, I think Committee of Origin.
Committee of Origin, which I believe is Finance.
So the original motion?
The 23rd, so two weeks from today. Okay, send it to the committee of origin, Finance, September 23rd, two weeks from today.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? No. Abstentions?
I'm sorry, who was the second no? Dylan? Okay, thank you.
Well, just a minute. All those in favor, let me get it clear for myself, it's going back to Committee of Origin. The question was, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, aye, yeah.
Okay. All those no.
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 No. So two noes, any abstentions?
I got one no that time.
I was the second.
I'm sorry?
I was the second, no.
So it's four to three.
You had a third no.
Four to three.
Cathcart was no.
Four to three.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
So Council President, will you restate it one more time, the outcome?
So the outcome was four to three?
To send it to?
To the committee of origin.
The committee of origin, which is the next Finance Committee in September.
All right, Mr. Jones.
All right. Now moving on to resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have resolution 2024-0083. Councilmember Bingo?
I'm pretty excited about this one, so, you know, obviously, I think that youth sports are pretty incredible, and, you know, as part of Councilmember Navarrete's ARPA proposal in mind, we were able to invest, you know, $250,000 into youth sports. Youth sports can really only happen if you have people to fairly and impartially, you know, officiate the game. And, you know, if anybody has ever been a sports official before, you take some real abuse, and what we're having right now is we're having a shortage of sports officials because people are pretty mean to them, you know what I mean? And so this resolution basically just says, we appreciate your efforts, we know that you're not doing it for the money because you're not getting paid a ton, but it's good, it's good for the community, and we are, yeah, again, just sort of saying, thank you, sports officials. Now, we are originally wanting to do this as a proclamation, but I know that the city has changed its sort of stance on proclamations and what we're wanting to do with it. And so you'll actually see at the end of this resolution, we left it open for a month, and I thought that we had corrected that, but I was on vacation and we did not. So what I need to do, and what I'm hoping to do, is that we could suspend the rules for this purpose to add September as the sports officials month. for this purpose, to add September as the sports officials' month in the city of Spokane. And normally, I would not do that, but tomorrow, the county's taking up this same exact resolution to pass it, because this actually was in the state this year during the session. It passed 98 to zero in the House, and then it failed in the Senate. It got killed in committee in the Senate, and so that's, that's the hope here, if I could make the motion to suspend the rules to add the word September where there's the, just the giant blank.
Second.
Any council commentary? It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to add the month of September to the resolution. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstentions? Great.
Okay, then I'd like to make the motion to add the word September to the resolution where the, where the blank is in the.
Second.
In the last sentence, I believe.
Yeah, I'm, I misplaced it, I don't know where it is, but you know what I'm saying? Mr. Wright, can you help me out there? I, I pulled it up and then I moved it.
You wanted to know how the sentence reads, or?
Yes. Yeah, just something quickly.
If the amendment is adopted, the sentence would read, be also resolved that the city of Spokane recognizes contributions of all sports officials and declares the month of September as sports officials' appreciation month.
My only comment is to say that I hope Councilmember Bingo is a little more forgiving of people who request motions to suspend the rules in the future.
I, when it has a purpose, support them. I supported one today. I even suggested one for a letter in committee, so it's not that I'm always against it, so long as it makes sense.
Thank you very much.
For the people watching at home.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstentions? Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
All right, next resolution, 2024 dash zero zero eight four. Dan Bowler is here to brief it.
It'll be hard to top that one. So this one is a fairly mundane one, or requesting resolution authorizing engineering services to enter into contracts with a number of specialty consultants such as geotechnical or structural engineers. These consultants are selected following the requirements of RCW 39. The need for this resolution is due to revise DOT rules requiring a separate contract for each consultant on each project, meaning that without the requested resolution, I will be in front of you dozens of times each for a $20,000 to $40,000 contract because the total amount will exceed $50,000 when you string together the contracts. In the briefing paper are the requested authorizations for geotechnical engineer, cultural resource consultant, real estate acquisition consultant, and surveying, and then the funds are reimbursed in general by the public works project, which are generally a street or a trail or sidewalk project for which the consultant is hired, general estate or federal loans or grants.
Any council questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan. Then we have resolution 2024 dash zero zero eight five. I believe Matt Boston's going to brief this one.
Thank you. So this is the, the resolution, or this is the resolution on the other side of the, the purchase order that Chris had briefed you on earlier on the purchase of the vehicles. This is increasing the SIP loan capacity, essentially doing a, a line of credit on our SIP. As soon as they're delivered, we're going to start making those payments on it, up to $4 million. I believe the purchase price is roughly three eight for the, three, yeah, three eight for the, the facilities management capital fund.
Councilmember Bingo.
And was this amount the result of when we temporarily increased the utility tax by 1%? That essentially was pulled from reserves? Is that what this is about?
No. So this, this is based on actually higher than normal fleet costs. We have an aging fleet for many of our fleets, and it's really catching up to us. Obviously, we stalled in COVID years, we're starting to catch up, and they had budgeted a lesser amount, meaning the solid waste fund had budgeted a lesser amount in 2024, ended up coming in a little bit higher based on repairs. We're trying to shore up those walls within the fleet department, see if we can get some cost savings there for all of its customers, not just solid waste. But because that cash isn't available for solid waste at the end of 2024, we decided to pivot a little bit and, and pull in from a, a SIP loan. Yes.
Has the interest rate been determined on this SIP loan?
Uh, so the interest rate is generally what the Fed interest rate is at, plus point five, 50 basis points, so it's very, very low. Again, it's, it's paying us back, so we're generating money on our own instead of going out for commercial funding. So it's, it's putting our cash to work, our cash reserves to work. We're, we're essentially borrowing from ourselves. I believe the cash, I believe the interest rate is locked on in the resolution. I don't remember it off the top of my head. Let's see if I could just pull it up really quick.
And while you're looking, what's the term?
Uh, it should be a five-year term, is generally what it is. I'm sorry. Three point seven eight. I believe the, the interest rate, because, so the SIP internal lending rate calculated on the day of the draw, so we don't have that interest rate at this point. So it is day on the draw plus 50 basis points.
Thank you.
And it is the term of the bond, multiple draw loan established, yes, so, yeah.
Further questions?
Thanks, Matt. Then we have ordinance C three six five six seven. I don't see Bart here, but I think it's just a rename of the office.
Yeah, simple cleanup, we, I can take this one. We heard it in public safety as well as briefing, just changing it from on BUDSman to on BUDS.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to first reading ordinances, we have ordinance C three six five seven one. This one will be briefed by Tim Zamlin.
Good afternoon, council. Ordinance three six five seven one is a franchise agreement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe for a spur track that goes from Fisk to Julia, and it supports Norfolk Iron and Metals for their, their shipments. So there's a number of these little spur tracks that were put in after the city became a city. So we worked with Burlington Northern Santa Fe to kind of clean up some of these expired franchise agreements, and we found out that some of these spur tracks no longer exist, but this one does, and that's what this franchise is for. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tim. And then we do have one special consideration that will be briefed by Councilmembers upon.
Yeah, this is just the recommendation from the Tourism and Cultural Investments Committee for funding allocations of the funds, which would be the first time since the pandemic that these funds have gone out the door.
All right, with that, that concludes the current agenda for September ninth.
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the number of 3B from $78,191.09 to $75,470 instead. And then I would like to adjust number 11 to say $1.75 million as opposed to $109,912.20. And then lastly, to change the line where it says related to items, you know, consent agenda item, make it item 18 is related to 19, and 19 is related to 18.
Second.
Quickly, do we need to suspend the rules to do that?
You don't need to suspend the rules, no.
Okay.
Do you need a second?
I did it.
Oh, okay.
And it's been circulated by email from Ms. Pfister, too.
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? I will now entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to approve the consent agenda or the agenda?
The agenda.
Oh, I heard consent agenda. The whole agenda.
The whole agenda, yes. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? I'm open for discussion. Pass. Thank you. We'll see you back at 6:00 PM this evening.
Discussion, man. I heard.